Welcome everybody to this episode of the Elevate Your Leadership Podcast with me, your host, Bob Pizzini. If you've listened to my podcast before, you know that I love to have discussions with people who not only bring great value to me and my organization, but I like to talk to people who are going to be bring great value to you and your organization. Today's guest is Alexis Gertis. Alexis, among all the other things she's done in her life, is running for the Virginia Beach School Board. It's a crucial assignment. It's a crucial position. Alexis lives in the second district. Alexis Gertis and her husband Lane have been married since 2014. The couple adopted their oldest daughter shortly after they were married, and since that time have had two more children. Alexis is a proud mother of three girls, Alyssa, Scarlett, and Vivian, and her golden doodle Lemon. Two of her three children are school aged and attend District Two Virginia Beach City Public Schools. She was born and raised in Virginia Beach and is a graduate of Kellum High School. Alexis earned her Bachelor of Science degree in chemistry from VCU, that's Virginia Commonwealth University, where she competed as a Division One athlete on the cross-country track and field team. Upon graduation, she worked for a law firm. Let's see, chemical degree, go to work for a law firm? Yeah, that makes sense. She worked for a law firm as a paralegal before transitioning into a sales career. Alexis has been in the medical sales industry for 11 years now. As a military wife and professional working mother, Alexis understands the challenges of working parents, in particular, the stressful demands of deployments and relocations that our military community faces. Many students in Virginia Beach come from military families, and this is an important perspective that Alexis will bring to the school board. Throughout the years, Alexis has volunteered in various ways within the schools, from tutoring students to assisting teachers with school events. She is a former court-appointed special advocate volunteer, where she served the court system as a voice for abused or neglected children. Alexis supports the Navy Special Warfare Community, that's Navy SEALs, Naval Special Warfare, as a peer mentor network volunteer fostering fostering engagement throughout the East Coast community to help strengthen the family support system. She and her family attended Beach Fellowship Church and are actively involved in homeless outreach. Alexis is running for school board as a parent with skin in the game. Fueled by her faith, she is standing up for our children, ensuring we do everything we can to help them succeed. Virginia Beach is Alexis's home, and she is committed to making it be the best it can be. And I will add that I have a senior who goes to Princess Anne High School, so I have skin in the game as well. Welcome Alexis Gertis.
Thanks so much, Bob. I'm so happy to be here today. Excited to talk to you. It's actually my very first podcast ever, so it's my debut. Excited. I look forward to talking to you.
Awesome. Well, we're off to a great start. So let's just talk a little bit about your upbringing. You were born and raised in Virginia Beach. What's it like, you know, being a young lady, a girl, growing up in a beach town? What was your upbringing like?
Gosh, I grew up here. I went to Bayside Elementary School, Bayside Sixth Grade Campus, and then went to Princess Anne Middle School and Kellum High School. That's where I graduated. It's great. I mean, it's really actually in this process of running for a school board, it's been humbling to see the support that's, you know, from my just elementary school level, middle school, high school, all of these, you know, peers that, you know, I built these relationships with come out and support me.
You know, that's super cool. Having been brought up through every facet of our school system and now coming back to serve, and I think that the experience you have, the outreach, the volunteer, certainly being a military spouse, and you know, I was in for 26 years, and of course, we know what that life is like. My kids have gone to several different schools before we landed in Virginia Beach, and it's, we're real happy with raising our children in Virginia Beach, generally speaking. Okay, so Division One athlete, you chose track?
Yes. Well, to be honest with you, my senior year of high school, I tried out to every single team I could get on. And they were excited to have me, the basketball team, the soccer team, but then when they realized that I was already a senior, like, yes, this isn't gonna work out. It's like, all right, well, the track team accepts everybody. So I joined the cross-country track team, and I've never looked back. And I'm so glad that God pointed me in that direction, because it's something that I still do today. And it's just been such a rewarding experience. So fast forward, I ended up getting a scholarship to run at VCU as a Division One athlete, and it's just been, it was a great experience. It really made the college experience just that much more rewarding.
Yeah, that is super cool. So an athlete, a Division One athlete on a scholarship at VCU. And then how did chemistry come to your radar as a major?
So I'm sure everyone could probably relate to this. I think most students that, you know, set off to college.
Breaking bad, right? Breaking bad.
No, they set off to college and they want to be a doctor, right? So that's their ambition. I'm gonna go to medical school. So you get signed up, and you're gonna be a biology major, and that's your plan. I had a different plan at the time. I'm always tailoring it even today. So it's a great skill set to have. But my plan originally was to actually major in nursing, do nursing and have that perspective, because I always felt that when I was communicating with my doctors and, you know, the nurse practitioners, there was just a different perspective, you know, in that clinical aspect of it. So I decided I was gonna be a nurse, and then I was gonna go off to medical school. Upon volunteering, you know, I did a lot of volunteer work before I went off to college at Centerra, Virginia Beach General time. And then when I was there, I also did about 40 hours a month of community service, you know, volunteer hours at the hospital at MCV. I think they call it something different now, but that's how old I am. So doing that, so with that experience, it kind of led me to a different direction. I said, you know, I don't know if it's exactly what I want to do. And so I loved chemistry. I took AP Chemistry in high school at Kellum. I loved my chemistry teacher. She had me motivated. One mole is equal to the molar mass. That was the thing. So that really just really kind of jumpstarted my interest there. Now, we get down to organic chemistry, no, I hated that. But I pushed through because I did have 18 scholarships to go to college. So 17 were academic and one was athletic. So from listening to my advisors and other people that have already graduated, they had, instead of just changing your major continuously, they said just stick with it. Get it done, graduate on time, and don't accumulate any debt.
Yeah, that's pretty cool. That's a good plan. And VCU is not too terribly far away, so you were able to come home hopefully on a regular basis.
Definitely, definitely. It was great.
So how did the paralegal thing come about?
So when I mentioned that I didn't want to change my major, you know, so I started to get a little bit more involved in, you know, the political side of things. And I thought, you know, I really enjoyed debating, even in high school, you know, I enjoy having constructive conversations with people. And I was like, maybe I want to go to law school. I think this might be a good fit. So, and that's where that that thought process of not changing my major and just sticking through it, because I'd have to retake a bunch of other courses at the time. So just stuck with it. Because in the grand scheme of things, it really doesn't matter what you major in when you're in college, unless you're doing something specialized, like.
Totally agree. Totally agree.
Get the degree and move on.
Yep. It's the graduate degree that kind of matters a little bit more. Yeah, yeah, I totally get that.
So in that sense, that was kind of what led me afterwards to want to get some experience as a paralegal before heading off to law school. At the time, that was my plan.
Okay. And then that changed as well?
Yes. Yes. Life changes. And I'm all about just figuring out a new plan, okay? And let's just divert.
Yeah, okay. All right. So and then obviously, at some point, you got married and had children, and you're raising a family, which is, which is super cool, in the wonderful city of Virginia Beach. Let's, let's transition over to leadership a little bit. You are running for the Virginia School Board, Second District. So is it the same as City Council? Is it district by district, the way people vote?
It is. So I'm sure most of you are aware, especially now that early voting started, and they're getting out there, and they recognize, hey, I can't vote for the person I thought that I was coming in to vote for.
Right, exactly.
So the city was sued last year, and during that process, they changed the districting to more of a ward system.
Yeah.
And I think this is reflective to how most cities, you know, conduct their voting process. So I think it's nothing that's, you know, just unique to Virginia Beach.
Yeah, well, I, we'll see, because this is new. You know, we went from at-large to ward, and it's new. And Portland, Oregon is the most diverse city in the US, and they have a at-large system. Yeah, so we're in the midst of an experiment, and we'll see what happens. But do the, do the school board districts match the city council districts?
They do. They do. So you have 11, and that's actually part of the law. So we have 11 city council,
Districts, right?
Yep, including mayor, though. So there's technically.
Oh, that's right. There's 10 districts in the mayor.
District and then the mayor.
Yeah, the mayor is at large.
Yes. And so the school board has to reflect the same number. So we have 11 for school board, since we don't have a mayor position. So, in that sense, so that will be an at-large position that will be up for election in two years. Okay, so they kind of stagger it. So right now, what we have on the ballot this November 8th, and for early voting, we have six school board members that are on there, you know, depending on your district. We have seven for city council, because there is a special election in District One.
Okay, all right. So Virginia Beach City Public Schools, 86 schools, I believe. I forget how many students. And the largest food supplier provider on a daily basis in Virginia Beach is the Virginia Beach City Public School. The largest transportation system in the city of Virginia Beach is owned and operated by Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And if I recall correctly, there are more employees that work for Virginia Beach City Public Schools that are not credentialed teachers than there are teachers. And not to say our teachers are not credentialed, but it's just to say that it's a huge operation with a lot more than just teachers, you know, making everything happen. So.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I mean, the school board, they do manage $1.1 billion. So it's huge. And I'm so thankful that people are paying attention now, right? And COVID was a silver lining to that. You know, we could kind of take that, you know, parents and community leaders are actually engaged and paying attention to, you know, these local offices that do, you know, it starts from the ground up. It's imperative to our future.
Yeah, for sure. So with that, you will be leading in a certain capacity, you, you know, part of your job, and these are my words, and I could be, I could be wrong about this, but part of your job then as a member, an elected member of the school board, is to advise and maybe in some cases, direct the superintendent. And from what I've seen in the past, that can, that can cause sleepless nights. Why do you want to take on something that first you have to go through a political campaign where you're gonna hear people say terrible things about you? Your kids are gonna hear people say terrible things about you. But why take on such a colossal undertaking?
You know, that's an excellent question. My why is, it's my children. It's simple. My children, my family. I grew up here. I'm a proud graduate of Virginia Beach Public Schools. I think we can all agree that Virginia Beach is a great place to raise a family.
No question about it. Yeah.
Probably why our housing costs are so expensive. It's a great reflection to our school system. And we have a great one. What I don't agree with right now, and kind of what's really stepped me, you know, encouraged me to step up and to be a leader on the school board, is just watching the divisiveness on our current board. It's just disheartening. And these are people that are supposed to be a representation of students, you know, kids. And I think that we deserve better than that. Teachers deserve better than that. And our school system deserves to be represented better.
So in terms of leadership, then how do you define leadership? And how are you going to apply that on the school board?
So I'm, I come from the pharmaceutical sales industry. So in that industry, I've been doing medical sales for the past 11 years now. And in that industry, if you're not aware, they spend a lot of time focusing on your development. That's huge. And I think there's probably some direct studies that show that correlate, if you motivate and develop, you know, your people, right, your employees, they're more than likely going to work harder and want to do more for your company, right? And feel more apt, you know, what's your motivation to get up in the morning?
For sure. Yeah.
In that sense. And so I've had a lot of experience doing, you know, leadership and professional development, you know, onboarding, you know, buddy programs with my company, and really working on development, you know, just not just on my professional level, but on a personal level, too. So I think that experience is something that is a benefit that I have to offer to the school board.
For sure. Practical leadership in the private sector is huge. And you have to know how to speak to people, how to meet people where they are, how to approach difficult or delicate situations, you know, without emotion, sometimes, sometimes with emotion.
Well, and that's the thing, we need empathy. I think that there's a huge lack of empathy. And I mean, I wouldn't just say for our school board, and I'm not trying to just pick on any school board member in particular, but I think our entire country right now, you know, we're over it. I'm door knocking. I'm talking to people at the PTA, you know, other parents, other moms, other, you know, fathers, that everyone, we're frustrated. We're frustrated. They're over divisiveness. They're over this emotional rhetoric. And people just want, you know, real people to step up and be able to have some conversations and listen to people. Sometimes people are, no, we're all going through something.
Yeah, no doubt about it. You know, empathetic leadership is something that's very in vogue these days as well. And I don't mean, I don't say in vogue like I'm mocking it, because I totally believe in it. You know, empathy, em, to be with, pathy, to feel. So I feel with you is kind of how I would define the word empathy. And as a leader of 40 people in my organization, I have to use empathetic listening, empathetic leadership, you know, I, that's something that I have to apply at my level. And I think you're right. It's something that every organization could use more of. And, you know, schools and universities are starting to teach this, you know, servant leadership and empathetic leadership. But my life's experience, my entire adult life tells me that there's a, you know, there's a combination, there's a blend, there's, there's the right type of listening and the right type of leadership at the right time, based on the situation, you know, just kind of having this real flexibility.
Well, and you also think about personalities, right? So I don't know, if you're in sales, you've probably done a DI profile, right? So D I.
Actually, right behind you there.
So where do you stand? I'd like to know.
You know what? I, I can't remember. Let me, we did that a long time ago.
Yeah.
So I'm a high D and a high I.
I could see that. I could see that. I'm an IS.
Okay, all right.
And also, I think when you're in a leadership position, that's something you have to keep in mind, right? Everybody's personality. And I think you need diversity, you know, in that field, too. So I think that's important as a leader to recognize that, how you approach things differently, and read your audience, you know, because, you know, everyone has something, you know, different to offer.
For sure.
And different perspectives. And I think that you should have leaders that are gonna hone in on that.
Yeah, so that's a big part of how I approach leadership as well. So, you know, I talked about empathetic, and then there's three levels of listening within that. You know, level one is, I'm just listening until you stop talking, then I'm gonna talk. Level two is empathetic listening. And then level three is, it's level two with observation of body language. This is all from the John Maxwell stuff, but, you know, does that match? And I have found that to be very useful when you're, you know, either asking for something from somebody, or more importantly, when they've got something that they want to tell you and ask you. So, so that's, that's huge. And so those are all tools that you are going to bring to the school board. What else do you think you will bring that is lacking at the board right now?
To be honest, you know, the issues of today on our school board are different than five years ago. You know, it's changing, even before COVID. You know, we're evolving things. There's a shift, right? A shift in our community and in our schools, you know, that's just not a difference there. So I think what I bring to the table is I have real skin in the game. And I don't say that lightly. You know, I have a vested interest. My kids are young. They're gonna be in the school system for a very long time. And like I said, I love our public schools. I love the teachers at our schools. I think they, you know, we need to keep our talented teachers. Fortunately, they're leaving. They, we're losing so many of these dedicated staff members, not just teachers, but even bus drivers. So that's my interest. I have a two-year-old, you know, a six-year-old and a 12-year-old. And two-year-old, she obviously can't go to public school yet, but she will. And I think understanding it from, not just from a perspective of listening to people and hearing them and where they're coming from, but also living it yourself makes a difference. And there's no one on the school board right now with young kids.
Really?
Not with young kids.
Wow, okay, okay. So, yeah, you know, like I said, I have a son who's a senior at Princess Anne, and he has VT, you know, on his radar. So that's really exciting. But, but skin in the game and to be vested like that is important. There's no, there's no question about it. You know, I coach, I coach youth hockey. I'm coaching high school right now. I started coaching when my son was a MIT, you know, the five, six-year-olds. And all the coaches, all the parents in the organization, they move up with their kids. And then usually, after their senior year, a lot of times the coaches move on, so the, so the next coach can come up with their kids.
Yes, and you pass the baton, right? And I think that that's extremely effective in leadership. And I'll tell you what, I have a hard time saying no. All right, I'm a, I'm an executor. I'm a doer. I like to get things done. What did our pastor say recently? If you want to get something done effectively, ask the busiest person you know. And I can't think of anybody busier than a mom.
Yeah, yeah. That's a good one. Yeah.
Pretty effective there. And so in that sense, what I, what I did decide, I did a lot of leadership and development the past few years, particularly last year in 2021. And I had a direct reflection to that impact on my sales numbers, right?
Yeah, right.
Leading with President's Club and, you know, leading my district and being able to influence in all these other areas of the company, not just with sales numbers, but with leadership and helping others mentoring them in that sense. But this year, I decided that, hey, I need to step back a second. I need to learn how to say no. I can't, I can't be there for everyone. You know the oxygen mask analogy? You know, I always say that all the time.
Oh, yeah.
You're on the airplane. You know, what good are you to anyone if you're not breathing?
Yeah, that's right.
You gotta put that oxygen mask on first. So I said, you know what? This year, I'm gonna sit back and I'm gonna lead from behind, right? I'm gonna delegate a little bit. I'm gonna give everyone else an opportunity to step up and do some of the leadership roles that I had the privilege to do. And so I think that's something that you have to do as, you know, leaders in any capacity, is to keep that in mind.
For sure. One of my, one of my former teammates that was in my Elevate Your Leadership Seminar that I do, before COVID, I was doing it right here at IFLY Virginia Beach in our conference room. And then COVID hit, so I had to go to an online seminar. But Tebow, retired EOD teammate of mine, he said that he learned an important lesson from his father, which is that sometimes you lead from the front, sometimes you lead from the middle, and sometimes you lead from the rear. And it's important to know where you need to be, given the situation.
Yeah, we all go through seasons of our lives.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's important to have that perspective. And I think that's, that's self-regulation, right? I think that that's from years of experience of just have, if you have a growth mindset, I think that's something that should be instilled in kids, too. Thinking of how else can I continue to grow and develop, right? And that's why kids should also have high standards to strive for, which we can't be, you know, I think it's just really sad that we've eliminated valedictorian, salutatorian, class rank, you know, just so all the kids can feel equal. I really don't think that's equality. I think that's just lowering the bar. And that's, we need goals.
Yeah, yeah, everybody needs goals. I mean, you know, equality of opportunity, for sure, but equality of outcome is different. And it's different if you and I pursued the same thing. If I was running against you, there's not gonna be equality of outcome. Somebody's gonna be elected, and somebody's not going to be. So, so equality of outcome is, there's no guarantee for that, nor should there be. And, you know, this is something that, that this discussion resides in the D E N I space quite a bit. But the bottom line is, there's no, it's not a D E N I issue. There is no guarantee of equality of outcome. There can't be, it just, it would be impossible. Okay, we, folks, we are gonna take a quick commercial break. I'm a good capitalist. I know Alexis is a good capitalist, and we will be right back. And we are back. We are talking to Alexis Gertis, mom, Virginia Beach resident, Virginia Beach native, and candidate for Virginia Beach, for Virginia, for the Virginia Beach School Board, Second District. There's a lot of tongue twisters, Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and some of these other acronyms that, that kind of get us twisted up a little bit. Okay, Alexis, regarding the, your kids, you know, you said you're a mom with, with a seat at the table. I'm sorry, what were your words again?
So I'm a mom with skin in the game.
Skin in the game, skin in the game. So what schools do your kids go to now?
Yeah, so my oldest goes to Princess Anne Middle School, and my middle one, she goes to Princess Anne Elementary.
Okay, all right, that's pretty cool. And then do they play sports? Do the schools even have sports at that age, or do they play sports outside of school?
So they do have sports at school when you are at the middle school and high school levels, but elementary, they don't. So you have to do it outside. During this campaign right now, we have taken a pause. I keep joking with them, everything after the campaign, after the campaign, they were doing soccer right before this. And the poor third child, yeah, she doesn't get to do anything. She was a COVID baby.
Yeah. She's like your two-year-old, right?
Yeah, she's a two-year-old.
We're gonna see her on video here in just a minute.
What, though? That's an interesting, you know, we, we talked about seasons of our lives and how we go through that. So during the start of the pandemic, I was actually on bedrest. So that was, I was already doing the quarantine thing before it was cool.
Yeah.
And so I remember precisely, because it was the end of January of 2020, my husband was on deployment. It was his last deployment, because he's getting out next year.
Cool.
And which I'm so excited.
Yeah, so retiring after, after 20 plus?
Retire, yeah. He's been in for 20 years now, and he'll be 21 when he retires next year.
Yeah, that's super cool. So we all do that, and it's awesome.
Yes, yeah. So I'm gonna have to get some pointers on the coaching, because that's what he wants to do. He wants to be more involved and present, you know, in our kids' lives. He'd miss so much, you know, sacrifice from being away from family.
For sure.
But, um, yeah, so I went through that experience. Fortunately, I listened to the doctors, and it worked. And I was on strict bedrest, gained a lot of weight.
So, so this is.
But she came on her due date.
So, okay, so your daughter's born in the midst of COVID, and then you're, you're like in this high-threat COVID situation in the hospital?
Yes, yes. Unfortunately, I have to say, I had a great, great network of people, you know, my parents live nearby, and I'm very close to my mom and my dad. So I had that support system. And the command treats the families really well, the NSW community, and they sent him home right away to help me with that process.
Yeah, that's awesome. They do. I remember shortly after I retired, a friend of mine was on a deployment to Afghanistan, and his wife was diagnosed with breast cancer. And she's a good friend of ours, and she called me and said, you know, what do I do? How am I gonna get through this? And I said, your husband will be home in two days. As soon as you contact the command and let him know what's going on.
He just got chills.
Yeah, yeah. He'll be home in two days, and sure as heck he was, you know, and, and, and she's fully recovered, by the way. And so, so that's.
That just says a lot about our community, right? And just, you know, I know we have a village, you know, I know I have, I have other wives nearby that can help. And, but there's nothing like, you know, you don't want to have to make that ask, right? And so, but it, but it works. So I had the baby in June, and she is definitely a COVID baby, a lot of stranger danger, that sort of thing. So it was actually a joy to get her in a, a little daycare center, so she could be, watch that and kind of communicate, talk to friends, and, you know, get those social skills that she was lacking.
Yeah, that's true. And I'll tell you what, I think the, the social skill thing, even before COVID, you know, homeschooling, kids lack kind of this, this social aspect. If they're homeschooled, and I'll say, I've observed it just by coaching kids for 12 years, you know, the homeschoolers.
I gotta challenge you there a second. So something I've learned. So that was always my perspective as well, right? Until I started this process. And I started talking, since COVID, a lot more parents are homeschooling, right? So and.
Me included.
There you go.
Yeah, because my, my, my high schooler, he's got, he's got, he's got a twin sister. So I've got an 18-year-old daughter as well. And we decided last year to, to, actually not homeschool, she's at home, but she's doing Liberty University Online.
Okay.
Which they've got an incredible high school degree program. So it's, I don't know if you call that homeschooling or what, but it's, yeah, so we're, we're doing something like that.
Definitely. It's a, but what I've learned from talking to their parents that have chose this option, right? While they're still paying taxpayer money to go towards, you know, the public school system, they, you know, that's their choice. They decide to do that. But they still stay active, right? There's, there's a whole organization there that they've implemented where they, these communities talk to each other, and they plan out activities. And so they still, and I'll tell you what, they actually move very quickly through the process. There's a lot of, I guess, because if you think of taking into account class sizes in our schools, I think that's probably one of the biggest issues right now. But it's also a direct reflection of the lack of teachers in staff. So kind of hard to control that right now. But that's one issue, right? So there's only so much of the teachers having to balance that in a classroom, they can't go but so fast. So when you're at a homeschooling perspective, those parents are able to engage with their kids, you know, one-on-one, and they move a little bit more quickly.
Yeah, for sure. And there are homeschooling, when we were looking at options for our daughter, there's actually, it's homeschooling, but a group, a pod of seven or 10 kids will get together two to three times a week at one of those houses. And so, you know, there is some socialization. It's a, it's an academic environment, but, but there is some, some social aspect there. But, but I just think that, you know, homeschooling is evolving, I guess we could say, especially since COVID happened. But I think it needs to be a viable option for anybody who, who thinks that's the best route for their child, which is the decision we made for our child. Okay, folks, I'm going to ask Alexis to look at that camera right there. And if you like this discussion and other discussions about leadership in particular, please subscribe to my Elevate Your Leadership YouTube channel, where you will find all of my podcast episodes. I'm just starting to populate the video episodes. So this will be the fourth or fifth video episode that I'll put up there. But please subscribe, like the episodes, and I promise you will find value in every discussion I've had with everybody on that, on that podcast. discussion I've had with everybody on that, on that podcast, um, on that channel. If you are somebody seeking to be a better leader, whether you are seeking promotion, you're not in a leadership role now, but you want to prepare to be one, or you're a senior executive at the largest organization on the planet, um, there is value in every discussion on my YouTube channel. Okay, let's come back to Alexis. Now, um, Alexis brought her family here uh, over the weekend and they flew. And uh, so we're going to take a look at your flight experience.
Bye.
And uh, and I, I just thought, this is something new that we're doing uh, on the Elevate Your Leadership Podcast and thought it's super cool, super fun. And we're going to take a look at it and just see what you think about it. All right. There we go. So you are wearing, wearing the red helmet, getting ready, ready to enter the flight chamber. I think Nick was your instructor.
Yeah, he was great.
Cool. Yeah, he's, he's, he's an awesome instructor. Our whole, our whole team is cool. All right. Pretty good body positioning. Now you said you had flown once before, right?
One time before.
Okay.
Now, was this the first one?
This is your second one. This is the second one. Yeah. So, so Alexis did two one-minute flights. So this is your second one. And we have the high flight coming up, which is why I put this one in here. But there's something else really cool and it just happened. See that little girl in the pink flight suit?
Oh yeah. She was glued to that little glass there. She was so excited. She was ready to get in there.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, bring her back on her third birthday. So, so she's wearing a flight suit. So a little pink suit. There you go on the high flight.
That was a blast. I'll tell you what, you wouldn't believe how much of a workout that was. I was sore for several days, my upper body.
Yeah. It, it is a bit of a workout, but you have good position. You are a little rigid, but overall you have really good body positioning. So you look great. And look at your daughter. She's doing her job perfectly.
That my poor husband, he really wanted to do it. He's done it several times. You guys have been really gracious, especially with the command to bring them in to, for practice, you know, since they jump out of airplanes all the time. It's a good uh, a good thing to practice on, but uh, he couldn't, he had shoulder surgery.
Ah, okay.
So recently.
Yeah, that's fun. We really enjoy doing that. We do it with uh, through the Navy SEAL Foundation and we also do it through the Navy Special Operations Foundation for the families. Um, then of course, we do training here uh, on a daily basis. Okay, Alexis, what haven't I asked you? What do you want to share with the listeners and the voters and the moms and the other residents of Virginia Beach that we haven't talked about?
Honestly, I just, I'm, I'm an open book, you know, I, I'm genuine. I really mean what I say when I say that I'm doing this for the right reasons. I'm doing it for my kids and for every student in Virginia Beach. I really look forward to bringing some common sense and sanity back to our school board. And I hope I can do that if you elect me. I know there's early voting right now. So you can get out and vote now, Alexis Gertis for District Two, or you can vote on November 8th. And if you've already voted and you want to volunteer your time, I do need that. I need some boots on the ground. We have 13 precincts to cover.
Wow.
And so um, it's just having a front row seat to this campaign process, it's, it's really enlightening. You, you learn a lot and just how much it, um, it takes away. I mean, take time away from your family.
For sure.
You know, your friends. I keep telling all my friends, I will exist again.
Yeah.
After the campaign. So it's a little, lots of balance, but I, you know, at the end of the day, I think it's so worth it. And I really hope, you know, given that, God willing, you know, I'm elected, that I can represent um, the students and schools of Virginia Beach the next four years.
Okay. Well, that's awesome. Well, good luck in your campaign. And uh, thank you so much for coming on the Elevate Your Leadership Podcast.